Calling the meeting to order. It's six thirty on Monday, March the ninth, and this is the March meeting of the Township of Edensburg Cardinal Administration and Finance Committee of the Whole. And the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda as amended with the addition of item six A, the St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission involved. So Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Certainly.
I have Councilor Cameron and seconded by Deputy Mayor DeSham. Close in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, and that item will be dealt with at six eight. Item number three is disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening?
None, I mean, none here.
No disclosures. Item number four is business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting. Are there any questions or business arise?
May I?
Yes.
I just have one question for clarification, and it's on page two. And it's the very last sentence, there was a consensus from committee that a report with respect to the Cardinal Arena building repairs be prepared for a future meeting. Is that, I didn't see it in our package tonight, is, will that be coming forward?
Through, through the chair, I believe that report was presented at budget meeting number five with respect to the breakdown of the Cardinal Arena building repairs.
My mistake. Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed that. Thank you. That's all.
Anybody else? Well, actually, I had the same, the same question on, it was page two of fifty-eight. And there was a report with respect to the Cardinal Arena building repairs be prepared. We did get that report, because I just don't remember.
Yeah. Through, through the chair, we did, we did have some discussion which broke down what portion was snow plowing and what, what portion was, what was repair and what portion was supplies.
So you're telling me to go back to the agenda for budget number five?
If, if, if you could review and make sure that that report was satisfactory.
Okay. And so my second question is on page five of fifty-eight. And page five of fifty-eight, the issue was vehicle repairs. There was consensus from committee to have staff prepare the requested report. Sale requested a report be prepared with respect to vehicle repairs and maintenance, including make, model, age, mileage, total expenses per vehicle. And it was consensus to have staff prepare the requested report. When will we see that report?
Through, through, through the chair, I believe that report was also presented at budget meeting number five.
Well, no, not, it wasn't. Not according to make, model, mileage, total expenses that I could see. I, I, I do recall a report, but it wasn't a sort of a kind of comprehensive report.
So through, through the chair, it presented the, the, the repair costs over the past five years, and it had make, model, mileage, and serial number for, for each unit.
Okay, so go back to budget number five?
Yes.
Actually, can't remember.
If that, that report isn't, isn't sufficient to advise in all.
Okay.
But I think, I, I think it captured everything in, requested in that report.
Okay, I'll go back to number five and have it. My apologies.
Well, it was, it was exciting budget meeting five that we agreed to do a conclusion.
All right, page, last question on page six of fifty-eight. And on page six of fifty-eight, on item number ten, we just had a very quick during the question period township resolution with respect to arena contribution. Now, I have to say that I have not spoken to either Mayor Todd or Mayor Malanca about the discussions that went on last fall about the Prescott contribution to our arena operating deficit or the Augusta contribution. But, so my question tonight is to the treasurer, are we at the point where we have got with a high degree of accuracy our revenues and expenditures for the 2019 calendar year with respect to the operation of our two arenas and our, is that report, do we have it to the degree of accuracy where we can now indicate to those two municipalities what their expected contribution will be?
Through the chair, the auditors were here last week, so they have done the final audit of, of 2019. I haven't seen any adjusting entries yet from the auditors, but if there's any changes, there might be some, some minor changes, but I expect for the most part the, the revenues and expenditures for the arenas is as accurate as it is in the system right now.
Okay, now, what is the mechanism to realize on those two commitments that were made? And I believe that if I got it correctly, the commitments were from Augusta, they agreed to, to cover twenty-five, up to twenty-five thousand dollars of the loss, the operating loss at Cardinal and Spencerville.
So, so through the chair, in, in reviewing the, the two resolutions, the Prescott resolution ended at midnight on November eleventh. It was, it was one of those conditions, and with respect to the Augusta one, it, it spoke about an agreement being signed between the three parties before that would be realized.
An agreement being signed between the three parties?
The three parties.
So in other words, both of those commitments were conditional commitments on us supporting the third arena?
Certainly, the one appears to be conditional on us supporting the, the third arena.
Okay, and I just want to get that clarified for the public record, that, I mean, we were under the impression that, that those commitments were in recognition of the fact that neither of those two municipalities were incurring any arena expenses during the 2019 calendar year, and that they had extended that offer unconditionally on the basis of the fact that we were bearing the full expense of, of operating two arenas. So, so you're clarifying for us that those commitments, those offers, if I can put it that way, were conditional upon us supporting the application for a third arena in the area?
Through, through the chair, they, they were conditional upon an agreement being signed between the, between the three municipalities.
Okay, and that agreement never came to fruition?
And that agreement never came.
So, in the end result, the Cardinal, the Edensburg Cardinal taxpayers are paying the full cost of operating two arenas for the 2019 season?
As it seems now, that would be an accurate statement.
Mr. Chair, I thought that there was a resolution passed at the Augusta town council meeting by the treasurer, or floated by the treasurer and voted on by the council that, didn't have any conditions on it, that was basically that they would support so much, up to so much per year for a two, on a two-year basis. And I think the total amount would be in the, in order around forty thousand dollars, but I don't have it with me, I didn't know that was coming up, but I'd have to dig it out at home. But I think, I think that, that resolution was not part of the discussion regarding joint effort to proceed.
Standalone resolution?
Yeah.
So, so through, through the chair, it may not directly have tied to the application, but it tied to an agreement being signed between the three parties.
The Augusta resolution did?
Yes. That, that is my interpretation in reading that resolution. I can, I can certainly provide those resolutions to committee.
Yes.
To review again.
Okay, could, could we see them for the?
Sure.
For the meeting next week? I, I'm going to go back to my file, I shudder to do it because my file is about this thick, but I do have all the documentation that came forward during that rather hectic period as we wound our way up to that deadline. And I'm, I'm, I can't imagine that, I can't imagine that those two municipalities are, I, I thought we had come to the basic understanding that, that they realized that neither one of them was contributing anything to arena operations, and this was their way of, this was their way of contributing to arena operations for the region. And I can't, I'm sorry that I've misunderstood it, because I, I thought it was a, a non-conditional offer on their parts, but would appreciate getting those resolutions. Okay, I'm going to move on then. And so I'm moving on to delegations and presentations. We have none, and so now we're at the discussion item for the St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission and our involvement with the commission. And as I recalled, our discussion in the last meeting, it was a question of whether or not we're of a political will to serve notice to the commission that we'll end our involvement in June of 2021. And if I recall correctly, there was something to do with a deadline at the end of March this year that would sort of end our involvement in June next year. And just to, just to get things in perspective, I think our original three-year commitment was, would have ended in June, on June the thirtieth of 2020, that was our original commitment, but we have received the invoice for the entire 2020 year, and I believe, have we honored that invoice and cash flow to that invoice?
Just looking for the treasure.
I, I would have to double check, but I would imagine it has been paid, I would have just have to double check, because it, it would have come in in the timeframe, if it's not paid, it'll be on this next disbursements in, in March.
And I think if it has not been paid, and if the check is on the March disbursement sheet, then I think that I would like to write a letter to go with it, to go with the check. But now I'm, I'm opening the floor for more discussion with regard to our continued involvement. And looking for someone to open the discussion. I think everybody knows where I stand.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go. I was the one, or at least one of the ones that, that had, it seems like, the most hesitation in, in regard to this, and, and asked and begged for a little bit more time to do some more diligence, talking to other councilors, mayors, and, and people involved. And, and having, having done that, I, I do still have major concerns with, with the project and, and our involvement in, in the project. However, having a, a very frank and open and honest discussion today with Mr. Sandy Marshall, it, it was very clear from his perspective that the announcement of, of BIC coming and, and doing what they're doing would not have happened without the corridor's involvement, it was one of the reasons that, that they were attracted here, what was that, you know, that level. So, so having that discussion, the, you know, hour I spent with Sandy today, I did what was needed to be done, and, and I will be voting yes to stay for the one more, one more year.
Okay, are there any others? One's up.
No, I am opposed to it, I'm still opposed to it, unless they can change their format with a lot more transparency about what they're do, doing and not prepare to vote every year.
Now, of course, you're prefacing that with the word unless, they can be a little bit more transparent about what they're doing.
Absolutely. I, I, all councilors have the right to know, whether it's in closed session or not, we have a pay for it, we have the right to know what we're spending our taxpayers' dollars on.
Good for the chair.
Okay.
I think we shared a lot of the, the same concerns, and, and I still have a lot of those exact, exact same concerns, and I would make the suggestion that maybe you make that same phone call that I made today, I could connect you with, with him and, and, you know, hear him out, and, and I think it may go a long way towards getting, you know, that much closer to some of that, that level of comfort. I still have the same hesitations, I think, that, that you do, but he speaks at a, a much more open level than, than even the mayors do. You know, I, I spend a considerable amount of time talking to them, and he mentioned, you know, actual businesses that, that they're talking about investing in and, and that they're working with, one of which is, is right in our, our own township. And, and so I think, I think, you know, if you may, if you, and, and he is more than willing to have that conversation, like he said to me today, if, if it helps.
My problem is, he needs to have that conversation with the whole council, in council or one-on-one.
I, I, I agree that.
I'm not a person that wants to talk to somebody one-on-one and get information that somebody else doesn't have, I want in front of everybody, if you've got information to give us, you can just come before council and give it to us.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree with that. He's not going to make it here for tonight.
Okay. And, and I have no problem, you know, Sandy Marshall is headquartered in Sarnia, but he does visit the area once or twice, well, tries to get here every month, and I certainly have no problem with him coming and speaking to council and Cameron, and I know he'll be very open and very transparent, and he'll be a lot more open and transparent than, than the information that we're getting from commission. But anyway, I want to go now to Councilor Gilliba and then to Councilor Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support, I did go out and, and talked to a few people, I was talking to actually a bit of government, give you a little insight on this. And the St. Lawrence Corridor was, had a big part of BIC coming here, there's no question about that. In saying that, they have to do a little bit better housekeeping. And with your little check and note, I like you to put in there that we want to meet with them three times per year with our council, and that out of those three meetings, two will be closed sessions to inform our council of the business status of what they're doing. And I also want a financial statement, annual financial statement from them to be provided to our council. And I also want them, I could want, anyways, I want them to be focused on attracting new industrial and commercial business of what they're able to do. And I heard through the grapevine that they want to get into other stuff, like training for unemployment, maybe financing some business. I think that they should not be duplicate of what we have here now, which means Education Training Center is doing good, CSE for training, they're doing an excellent job, don't duplicate. And I heard they're getting into some financial, they might be financing some businesses, a possibility, let's not do that. They're duplicate, and again, with the services from Gremlin Community Future Development Corporation. So those are the things I want them to know, what we want. With our check or PS this year, no money, no funds, I'm too bad since I love that.
Okay, so just let me talk just a minute about the financial statement. They did at the last meeting review the financial statement for the year ending December the thirty-first, 2019, and I can bring that financial statement to a meeting, and I will bring it, because there's, there's nothing about that financial statement that's confidential, and there's no reason you can't see it, so I will have that. I'll bring it here and have a copy, you can get it on an agenda. And because this is kind of a timely issue, I think if Chair of Public Works doesn't mind, I'll, I'll just have it put on that agenda, then he can see it sooner rather than later. It's very simple. You can see, you can see without a shadow of a doubt where the money goes, it's pretty , pretty obvious. I'm going to say that one of the original concepts behind this thing was that the seven municipalities at four dollars per head would raise about two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, I think. And then the concept was that staff would take that two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, and they would leverage that with other provincial and federal programs, and it is possible to do that, providing you do the right applications. You can leverage that up to two or three times that amount to provide operating funding to do different things. Now, long and short of it is, is that we've never actually done that. And so here we are in the third year, and the concept of taking the original financial commitment, municipal financial commitment, and leveraging that up to a larger amount, that hasn't happened. But anyway, I'll bring the report, so, and I have no problem doing that. Now, with regard to a little bit more openness and transparency about what they're doing, again, that's why the Township of Leeds in the Thousand Islands opted out last year and then opted back in, but clearly the, the concept was, and, and the criteria was, unless we know more about what you're doing, you're more open and you're more transparent, and there's more substance to your reports, we're not interested in staying. So that report that Leeds in the Thousand Islands is looking for is supposed to come forward at our March meeting. So the date for the March meeting has been set, everybody's more than welcome to come to the meeting, and I just give you the date, if you want to vote and put it in your calendars. That meeting will be at, on March the twenty-fifth, at the one o'clock, and the location just hasn't been announced yet, but we know the time and the date, one o'clock on March the twenty-fifth, and there's to be a full report of what they did in 2019. I know that the mayor of Leeds in Thousand Islands will be eagerly awaiting that report, as will I. Okay, now, Councilor Cameron, you wanted it?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, as, as I said at the last meeting, we, we discussed this, until I had spoken to two, two different mayors, I, I was for opting out a hundred percent. However, they've, they've somewhat drawn some information that I wasn't aware of at the time to my attention, and I, I think I will opt to stay in for another year, providing we get most of the transparency, openness, and, and information from them this year. I like Councilor Gilliba's three-meeting proposal, and if we can get the information we need from that, I think, because it's a regional situation, we all help each other in certain cases, I, I think we'll stay in for another year, that would be my, thank you.
So, in the letter, the concepts to be highlighted in the letter are three meetings with the commission, two to be closed, more open, openness and transparency.
Copies of minutes?
Copies of minutes.
And the financial statements?
Financial statements. And, of course, results.
Plans and results.
Yeah. Plans and results.
Going forward. And six are the main topic.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
That's right, number four, you're right.
Stick, stick on main purpose, and that business of getting off, off mandate, if I can put it that way, a number of us fought that one, and when, when it first reared its head and pointed that out. We as mayors have much more knowledge about what's going on in support for small businesses and large businesses. We, than, than those three guys that are running the commission, and they don't seem to be showing that much interest in learning. That's what's, one of the things that's bothering me. I mean, why would they want to duplicate what South Gremlin Community Futures, or Gremlin Community Futures is doing? They're, they're the ones with the money and the expertise. What CSE is doing for consulting and training and getting people for the workforce, what the United Counties is doing with pathways to production and getting people involved in training for getting ready into the workplace, I just, anyway.
Question?
And by the way, just so you know, just before I let, I go back to you, at the February meeting, both Andy Weir from the United Counties and Andy Brown from the United Counties were there to explain very comprehensively the aims and objectives of the United Counties Economic Development Department for the next four-year period. And, and that program for the next four-year period was put together by that department, it was presented to the United Counties, the United Counties endorsed the concept, in other words, the work plan for the next three to four years, where the emphasis was going to be, what kind of things were going to be aimed at, and, and what the objectives would be. That was all laid out in a very detailed, three-page brochure, was approved by United Counties, and the same day that it was approved by the United Counties at its morning meeting, I took the entire package to the commission meeting that afternoon and distributed it around, and nobody knew about it, when Andy and, and Weir appeared in February. They never even read the thing. So I just, you know, I, so I get my frustrations too, but I'm only one member on that, on that fourteen-member board, it's hard to make a lot ahead of you. Go ahead.
Two points. One, when it's a fourteen-member board, I think it imperative that, that we have our second representative there for, if not every meeting, as many as possible, and I understand that, that having that second representative there has been, been a bit of an issue in, in the recent terms, so hopefully that, that will get clear. But to go a tiny bit further with the discussions that I had today, you know, the, one of my concerns was sort of that, this is going to be a strong way of saying it, but the dysfunctionality of the way meetings went on and, and the way things got done. I, I have been sort of assured that, that this is a new beginning, basically a reset of it, and the problems that, that were there going forward, they will be controlled and, and that that will be brought under, under control, and, and it will be done better. So, so thus for me, again, my willingness to follow the lead of, of the, the people that were elected in, in all of those seven municipalities, that, that's basically why I'm, you know, following along and saying yes. It's not without reservation, but, but it is trust in the fact that, that that reset button's being pushed, and, and it'll come back around.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, perhaps someone could, could, could inform me, but as the, as the other municipalities seem to drop off or drop out, is there going to be an increase in the amount of money that they expect to get from the remaining, remaining members?
Okay, so let's go back a step, because your major premise is wrong. Leeds in the Thousand Islands served notice that they wanted out, and then served notice that they wanted back in, and they've been accepted back in.
Okay.
And we're the only ones right now that I'm aware of that are publicly talking about our involvement. I'm not aware that any of the others are. I know that Leeds in the Thousand Islands is looking forward to this report in March to see that it satisfies their criteria and that it brings up their comfort level, but other than that, I'm not aware of anybody else that's having, well, I know of two or three people, two or three other mayors that are having reservations, but they're dealing with them behind, they're dealing with the reservations behind the scenes at the governance level.
Okay, for some reason, thank you, for some, some reason I was under the impression that two or three had dropped out.
No, no.
But I'm, I'm obviously wrong. Okay.
I think it's quite obvious that the majority of our council here, here is willing to stay on, but I think it needs to be made quite clear in your letter that you send, that this is a one-year, definitely a one-year commitment, and if the criteria isn't brought forward, that they're sticking to their initial mandate, because I'm afraid of this commission starting like a lot of others, they start with two or three men, and then they want to get into something else, and the first thing we got a whole And the first thing, we got a whole bureaucracy of people working, doing duplicate service. So I think it needs to be very clear that we're making a commitment to June of 2021. And if things don't change, at that point, we're out. If they don't come up with the facts and let us know what's going on, and the points we've made that we want, if they're knocking out, we're done.
So just for clarity, at what point, to stay in for one year, at what point would we have to issue a letter to them saying we were out? I mean, that's now, isn't it?
Again, and I don't understand, I don't have it in the back of my head what the timelines are. I can't remember the agreement.
Yeah, so if providing notice by March 31st of this year, we would be opting out in... Is it June of 2021? So by not giving that notice, then we would be in for another 2021.
But are we always obligated to give... I mean, I think we only have to give one year's notice of termination, but it doesn't have to be... I mean, if we want out in February, we get a notice in October. Is that... Or do I have that wrong?
I believe it specifies 12 months. I believe it actually specifies 12 months.
Yeah, but 12 months, does it always have to be 12 months that ends in June, or 12 months that ends in December? In St. Martin?
You'd have to review that.
I'd have to review that.
Okay, so can you dig that out for us? Okay, so you haven't spoken to this yet.
No, I haven't, but if you recall last meeting, I was quite opposed to staying in. But there's been some articles in local papers. I think it looks like there's a review, an internal review going on within the Court of Commission. So I'm willing to, you know, back off of that objection, and at least for one more cycle. I find it really discouraging that we're in year four, and they're struggling with mandate issues, and like, what is their mission and that kind of thing? I really find that very, very discouraging. I remember when the original meeting was held here with the proposal from a pretty good sales guy, okay, who wanted to move in this direction, and using the positive factors that we had in our area, transportation-wise and job-market-wise and that type of thing. And we haven't seen any fruition of any of that kind of development. But I understand they take long, they take a long time. There's a long, long lead-up cycle. And before corporations will make those kinds of decisions to come in. And secondly, I understand the need for some privacy, because you can blow the whole deal out of the water if it gets off on the wrong track somewhere, okay? And then there's embarrassment for everybody. So I understand those things. So I'm not suggesting that the public should be fully aware of every last aspect going on, but I definitely think the members of the board should be fully apprised of what the program is, what the plan is, and when the expected success or, you know, cut-in period is for the first project. I know they're negotiating on the...
Yeah. Now, there's just one thing that I want to say here. And I'm not making excuses, because I quite agree with Counselor Hunter and Counselor Gillis that when we're the ones that are paying the money, we have the right to know what's going on, even if it is behind closed doors. And I think that that's proper, and that we all understand confidentiality. But I'm going to tell you that there are members on the board of the commission who, although they've signed the confidentiality agreement, do not understand what it means. Because as you've said, somebody speaking out of turn can blow a deal out of the water, and it can lead to all kinds of embarrassment. And there's at least one person that does not know how to keep things quiet.
Yes, it's a quote, Mr. Mayor.
Lee Mardle?
That quote of yours, whose lips will sink the ship.
Yeah. Okay, so if everybody's comfortable with me sending a letter that goes with the check, I'll draft the letter, I'll make sure that you all see it before it goes. And if you've got suggestions to make about the letter, if I haven't covered all the bases, you can let me know. You'll be able to see what I'm saying in the letter. Okay, so if everybody agrees, I'm going to move on then to item number 7A on the agenda.
That's decide A.
No, no, I think decide.
I think I've got consensus at the table here that everybody's going to be satisfied with the letter at this point.
One more cycle.
One more cycle.
One more year.
One more cycle, yeah, one more year.
Sorry.
And we can change our minds if we opt.
Yeah, we can always opt back in.
Yeah.
My apologies, I erred on Business Rising from the Minutes. It was actually budget meeting number four, not five.
I was going to do it after.
Okay, so go to four then. Okay, all right.
You're looking through five.
Now I'm at 7A, the Automatic Aid Agreement with the Township of Augusta. And we have a briefing note with us. And the briefing note has a recommendation that committee recommends the council enter into the attached automatic aid agreement with Augusta Township. So I'll be looking for a mover and a seconder for that recommendation. But for the immediate future, the draft agreement is in front of you. Let's just see if there are any questions arising with regard to the agreement. Does anyone have any questions about the agreement? Go ahead.
Through the chair to the chief. Did you create the document? Like, is this your document?
Through the chair, this is a very similar document that we've used with South Dundas, tweaked by both Chief Bowman and myself.
Okay. Were there any major changes made, or any changes made in the agreement we have with South Dundas in respect to the one with Chief Bowman?
Through the chair, other than like the financial considerations, where we've got an arrangement where there's no cash changing hands, we're proposing that their equipment shared with us and back and forth. And also, this agreement has a reciprocal agreement for a water tanker automatically. So anytime there's a structure fire in either township, the other one will send a tanker automatically on the initial dispatch. So the advantage is, obviously, we both benefit from a tanker. And we can also use that tanker during our water shuttle testing. If it's in an agreement, we can utilize Augusta's tanker to help with that testing in the future.
Last one. Just one comment to yourself. I think the document is excellent. It shows a great deal of willingness on Chief Bowman and Augusta's part to work alongside our fire department. That's good. Thank you.
I should note, before we go on, through the chair, there was one change, unfortunately, after the agenda package was put together, and that's in section 25 under insurance.
Page numbers?
Well, page number 25.
Okay, it's under insurance, go ahead.
So in the first paragraph, under municipal liability insurance, that should read 15 million, as per, that's Augusta's...
Per occurrence? Fifteen, one-five?
Yes, one-five.
Instead of 20?
Correct.
And 15 million annual aggregate as well?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? I'm just going to make one comment, and I'm going to refer you to the briefing note on page 8 of 58, under policy implications. Under the Fire Protection and Prevention Act, this is a very important paragraph. A municipality may enter into an automatic aid agreement to provide or receive the initial or supplemental response to fires, rescues, and other emergencies. The advantage of implementing an automatic aid program is that the municipality experiencing the emergency receives fire service from the closest available fire service. This provides citizens with seamless service through the elimination of service boundaries. Response times are reduced by dispatching the closest available apparatus and personnel. The reason that that is so powerful, and I'll say to the chief, you know that the United Counties has received the, what is it, $100,000 for a county-wide fire service review. These automatic aid agreements are absolutely crucial to establishing the fact that we have seamless service throughout the United Counties. Now, we have automatic aid agreements with our closest neighbors, thanks to your initiatives, putting one into effect with South Dundas and with Augusta, and I think we also have one with Prescott. But I think throughout the United Counties, there are others that don't have their agreements in place. So the fact that your agreements are in place, I think, will serve us very well during that review. And I would urge you to, when you get speaking to whoever it is that gets hired, to do this review, to bring that paragraph to their attention, very powerful. So are there any other questions with regard to the agreement before I ask for the mover and a seconder? Okay, a mover, please? Okay, I have Counselor Hunter and seconded by Deputy Mayor Deschamps. Any further discussion? Hearing none, about to call a question. Those in favor? Motion is carried. And congratulations, Chief Moore. Now, we have another one coming forward, or being under development with Prescott, I understand?
That is correct.
And have you got any kind of an idea as to when that process will come to fruition?
I will, actually, I will speak to that. I did speak with the CIO of Prescott, and we are hoping to potentially include part of that within the scope of this service review that's taking place through the committee.
Okay, that'll be the financial part.
That'll be the financial portion, so it will probably be the June timeframe.
Okay, now, so here's my response to that, if you don't mind. My response goes something like this. All of the other mutual aid agreements that we have are mutual aid without ties to financial exchanges of dollars. We already have, in our agreement with Prescott, a situation where Edwardsburg Cardinal and Augusta both pay to Augusta, I think it's 15,000 per year. Is that correct?
I certainly can't speak for Augusta, but our 2019 invoice was something like 14.5, 14.9, something like that, just shy of 15,000.
Okay, so they invoice us?
Correct.
Okay, so my worry comes from the fact that at a recent council meeting in Prescott, there was a lot of public admonishment that we were getting a service for which we weren't paying adequate dollars. And I hate to see that kind of thing being visited upon us, because I don't think it's deserving. But I would urge Mr. CIO that if it's a question of dollars that Prescott is looking for, where nobody else is, but we do recognize that they do have an aerial ladder, and if it's a question of dollars that they would like to receive more, you know, we're not chintzy, and we recognize that the Ministry of Transportation has a protocol of rates. And we're more than prepared to recognize that protocol of rates in recognition of the truck that they provide, which we do not own. So if by any chance it's possible to bring that agreement forward sooner, I would hope that you and the CIO of Prescott might be able to work that out. I don't think we need a county-wide fire service delivery review to come to a realization of the obvious. So I'll leave that with you.
Mr. Mayor, this agreement, the chief indicates there's no financial tax change in hand. But if Prescott's interested in, like, would this money be paid only if we use their truck? Or is it like a standing order, we pay it?
No, we pay it as a sort of a standing contribution.
Doesn't seem reasonable to me.
Well, and we've said to them many, many times, I mean, I think it's very interesting that this aerial truck that they've had, it's been used on three fires. All three of them were in Edwardsburg Cardinal Township. And I've said to them at the end of each one, invoice, send us an invoice. We know that you're contributing a piece of equipment that we do not have, along with the people. Send us an invoice. But, you know, rather than send the invoice, they seem to be prepared to do the side-drive-by-smear rather than conducting business. So, you know, again, if I can just reiterate that suggestion to the CIO, when we use that particular piece of equipment, send us an invoice, for goodness sakes.
So through the chair, I'd just like to indicate that at the fire chief level, from the operational and technical side, the agreement is basically in a comfort level between the two departments. There is some uniqueness to the agreement with respect to the aerial and the industrial park, and also the ice-water rescue portion and component. So we'll certainly work through as fast as we can between the CAOs to hopefully bring forward an agreement in the financial end as well that will be beneficial to both of us.
So let me just ask the question, then, the most obvious one. In the draft agreement that we have at this stage, do we purchase ice-water rescue as a service from Prescott?
I will maybe ask the chief to, can you summarize what, with respect to the ice-water portion?
In the proposed agreement?
In the proposed agreement?
Yes, the ice-water rescue is included, I believe also at MTO rates.
At MTO rates? Okay, fair enough, that's, you know, we understand that.
If I may, just to clarify, our agreements with North Granville and South Dundas, they do have a financial component where they pay us MTO rates when we do respond?
Oh, they pay us MTO rates when we respond there? Both North Granville and South Dundas? For the entire event?
Through the chair, it's for the first hour, because if you're there any longer than an hour, they just activate mutual aid.
Yeah.
So it would basically be for one hour.
Okay, I see. Okay, all right, so is there any further discussion there? All right, so I'm going ahead then, and item number 7B is the vested tax sale properties. And again, there's a briefing note here, along with a recommendation. And the recommendation is that council write off these two receivables. And, of course, that leaves those two little pieces of property as stranded assets, really. Maybe before we get into the actual recommendation, I will ask the, through the CIO to the treasurer, rather than leave the asset stranded, is there any effort at all to try to sell them to the neighbor that owns the next closest piece of land at the costs that are due here?
Through the chair, the... I'm not really sure why the amounts that are sitting there in a receivable situation are still sitting there. The municipal act has a specific section of the charge-back taxes. And if it's below a certain $10,000 or after nine years of time, you don't owe those taxes back to the other levies. So they should have been written off, you know, when it first happened, back in '01, in 2010. So carrying this receivable, I'm not sure what the thought process was at the time. So carrying this receivable, I'm not sure what the thought process was at the time. It doesn't, by writing it off doesn't necessarily mean that we say now we can't dispose of those.
No, I understand that.
So I think just for the, for the cleanliness of it is that this, the, this amount of money should just be written off. It should have been back in, in, in the time in which we actually vested the property, because the township does know it, and it's such a small amount, it seems silly to have maintained it as a receivable that's, you know.
Right.
Being that they're landlocked, yes, there's a potential, but the cost would all have to be borne on the, on the, on the owner. I don't think that the taxpayer should really pay for any legal to transfer the title over to, to a neighbor.
No, no, I agree. So, in other words, what you're saying, there's two, could be two processes here. We write them off as a result of this recommendation this evening, but rather than just forget about them, I'd like to try to get rid of them.
No, one suggestion, and I mean, you don't have to take my recommendations, but the, the smaller piece doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to the twenty-one thousand square foot, but the larger piece, you know, that, that certainly right now isn't, isn't a piece that's, you know, potentially buildable because the road doesn't extend there, but, you know, in the future, maybe there is, or maybe there is an individual who would like to extend that road. But that is a, that's a liability that we then have to maintain a road allowance or a road amount that we don't already do, but it's a, it's a better property, but maybe not now, but maybe in the future.
In other words, it could have considerable.
Value later.
Considerable, considerable value later.
Right now, it's probably not valuable, but once we, if ever we extended the road, it might have more value, and it might be better to wait to dispossess of it at a later date.
Okay, that's a good argument. Okay, so does anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a mover and a secondary here. Okay, I have Counselor Cameron moving, and Counselor Dilabah seconding. Any further discussion? Hearing none, about to call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, so that gets those two. Doesn't solve the problem, it just solves a receivable problem. All right, now, I'm at item number seven C, Asset Management Program Update, paper copy of the report previously provided, I brought it with me, and let me have a quick look here, what have we got? Uh, there's a recommendation, that committee recommends the council receive and accept the asset management plan as required by the Ministry of Infrastructure. So that's the recommendation on the table. Discussion, if any?
Yes.
Go ahead.
On the, on the briefing note, under financial considerations, is it, is it my understanding, and I'm just asking this question to be, to be sure in my own mind, the plan suggests that a one point two percent tax rate increase be leveled.
Levied.
Lev, levied to support over twenty years, blah, 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 and that one point four increase in water and three point six percent for sewer be implied. Now, is that on an annual basis?
Yes.
And if we, if, if we accept this recommendation, does that go into effect?
No.
When, when would that come up for going to effect?
Well, that would, that would certainly be a starting point with respect to development of, of a long-term financial strategy.
Yes.
Over at budget meetings.
Yes.
It's cer, it's certainly a great starting point for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there speakers here?
Well, I, go ahead.
Nope, fair enough.
The numbers, one point two, four point one, three point six, are going to be committed in a plan. So the plan will become a document, if we approve this recommendation, that, this plan will become a document that is, if you like, active on the township. Now, let's suppose that next year and the year after, and so on, we don't put in those And then ten years down the road, the township's in financial trouble, and the province sends in an administrator. And the administrator pulls this plan up and says, what have you guys been doing? The plan calls for one point two, four point one, and three point six? So what is the impact of that kind of potential issue?
So through, so through the chair, if you, if you took this document as a static document and said, yep, that's what it is, there's no discussion, that would be one thing, but this is a very fluid document. The day, the, the day that you got it, a week later, it's somewhat out of date.
Yeah.
As, as assets change, depending on what you, what you, what you replace, at, at certain times, it's, it's an adjustment. This is a plan, now the actual asset management planning process begins, right?
Okay, just want to make sure I run it through.
Through, through the chair, maybe continue along where, where you're going with that, is that, does this put in a, a bylaw that states that one point two percent increase will be every year, or, or will it be something that we have to approve every year?
So through, so, so, so through the chair, the, the, certainly the, the hope eventually will be that we're developing outside of one-year planning, that we're going into longer-range planning as, as that guide. But this is no, this is no different than the financial plan that, that we put forth for the water and sewer systems that we, that's required under the regulation, right? Here's, here's sort of what we're looking to do, and, and submit, and we're, we're going to, we're going to try to, you know, guide through it and, and achieve some of those goals, but it's, it, you know, things, things change, right? Funding becomes available, that, one-time funding, there, there's, there's a lot of options that will change, right?
So, so we aren't committed, we can still change our mind on that, it just gives us a plan working forward, and, and at the end of our four-year term, it doesn't, it doesn't tie the next council in to a decision that, that we've made here, that they may want to set a different, slightly different direction.
But that, that is correct, there's, there's certainly nothing to say that next year that, that council decides to put three point five percent levy on. Or one, four point five. So I think, I think it opens, it opens up the discussion, this is, they, they provide a, a path forward, like one option, but not the only option.
I have another comment, Mr. Mayor. Is that, like, I read a fair amount of this document, I didn't read the whole thing in my head, but I read at least half of it. It's one point two percent of what? There's no, I don't have a base.
Actually, I believe it says the tax rate.
In other words, I think what they're saying is you decide what you need for you're operating your capital, and then you add one and a half, one point two percent on top of that. One, one point two percent on top of all that.
Correct.
And that goes into a special fund.
Correct.
And then it's compounded, because this is whatever year.
Yep.
I'd like to see some numbers, you know, and what does the compounding yield?
I'm not sure if you'd like to see the numbers, Mr. Bradley.
Well, no, I'd like to see the numbers to know, well, at one point two percent of, say, the current tax rate, out ten years, five years, twenty years, what does it yield?
Twenty years when they're supposed to get rid of their deficit infrastructure.
But that's going to change every year?
Yes.
Okay, that's exactly what you said.
Yeah, so, 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 so at some, at some point, you have to realize that, at, at this point in time, here, here's an idea, here's a concept.
I got it.
That's, that, that, that's really what this is.
It's a starting point.
It is, it is.
I think, and maybe there's, there's a tiny, tiny bit of confusion, and the way that I understood it when the, the guy from, I think it was PSD, spoke, is it was one point two percent, not on the overall budget, it was one point two percent on the capital budget. Correct?
The one per, one point two percent is a tax levy, it's a tax rate increase, which in our case, a one percent is about fifty-seven thousand, so let's rough it up to about sixty thousand or so, that they suggest, over a twenty-year period, you levy that, and you use that to, to help, you know, bridge that infrastructure gap.
So my confusion, if I, can I?
Go ahead.
So my confusion, I think, Melly, was that, that, when, and I can't, I'm trying to remember his name, but I can't, when he spoke, I thought that he, he suggested that, that that tax increase was only on the capital portion of the budget, not on the operational portion of the budget.
It would be applied to capital, it wouldn't be used for.
So it's on the. It's one point two percent of the overall budget, but only to be applied to capital.
To both capital.
Okay, so that was my misunderstanding, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, anybody else here? I'm going to say a couple of things, because initially, when we got into working with this company, that was leading us through this process, I was invited to the meetings, and then that stopped all of a sudden, and I don't know why. And when he came here the other night to make his presentation, I had not, had benefit of, of reading this. So I have a lot of problems with his major premises, and he's got a major premise here that I'm really having a lot of trouble with. Starts at the bottom of page one, the last paragraph at the bottom of page one, it says, "To meet capital replacement and rehabilitation needs for existing infrastructure, prevent infrastructure backlogs, and achieve long-term sustainability, the township's average annual capital requirement totals five point one million." He's telling us in that sentence that we should be spending five point one million a year. And if I, and I say to myself, Todd, where do you get that number from? Five point one million dollars a year? Because I'm looking at the key statistics on, on the, the back page of the cover, telling us the replacement cost of our asset portfolio is a hundred and seventy-seven million. If I spend five point one million for twenty years, I'm at a hundred million dollars. So if I spend a hundred million dollars, is it, do I have to spend a hundred million dollars towards one point seven seven million of total assets? This seems out of balance to me. I'm, you know, so I'm, I'm, I would like to know, I'll, I'll follow through on the recommendation, because I think I'm taking comfort from the CAO's analysis and from the treasurer's analysis. We're going to receive it, don't really like the idea of accepting it, because I don't want to get confused with accepting this report as accepting the conclusions, or even accepting the recommendations. But I'd like to use this as a starting point, and then I would go back to this character and say, okay, now, you show me why you think I have to spend five point one million dollars per year, but I think that's the wrong number. Now, I know he's got a big, long report here that justifies that, but it's all justified on the basis of, it's all justified on the basis of policies that we've put in place. So when we put in place a policy that says we're going to amortize this building over fifty years, and replace it in fifty years, maybe we need to change that policy. Maybe, maybe we really don't need to, to replace this building in fifty years. If we upkeep it every so often, we can extend its life well beyond fifty. Same as our sewer and water plants, do we need to replace our sewer plant in twenty-five or forty or sixty years? I don't think so. If we keep them up as we go along, I don't think we need to replace them. Go ahead. What are the policies behind this?
Well, I think that we have kind of a conflation of ideas here.
Yeah.
Outside of municipalities, okay, in the corporate world, amortization like that is used for tax purposes, depreciation, et cetera, okay? We're not in that game. So we have to look at establishing some kind, like for vehicles, obviously, you'd have some kind of a timeline, but for permanent facilities such as this building, we're not going to build a new building.
So, so, so if I, if I may, this, this, this is part of it, you're, you're going from, we're, we're at about letter C or D in the alphabet, and you're jumping to Z. No, we're not going to replace this building all in one shot, but we're going to replace a number of the components.
Inside, maybe.
And, and outside, you might, you might want to replace the roof at some point, right? At the water and wastewater treatment plant, you might want to update the processing, right? So what we need is to take that building and then sub those components out with those, with those life cycle components, and, and plan for those replacements.
That hasn't been done yet.
Right now, we're at that building level, right? So now we need to get down to those components.
We're still at the grocery.
And, and remember, the hundred and seventy-seven million is based on historical values. So when we looked at some of our vehicles, they have a dollar value on.
Well, their, their, actually, asset is a dollar.
Completely.
Right, so if you're replacing that with a two hundred thousand dollar truck, or a three hundred thousand dollar truck, right, you've just increased three hundred thousand, right? So that, that, like, that's, that's some of the area where that, where, where that value comes in. And I can't remember from our twenty thirteen asset management plan what that value was a year, it was around, was it close to four?
Yeah, four.
I think it was a close to four million, that, the one that RV Anderson completed, the original one in, in twenty thirteen. Was recommending that we put four, like, four million away, like, in, in, in capital, so.
He's not recommending that we put it away.
Well, sorry.
He's recommending that we spend that much each year.
Correct, that's what you wanna work towards.
That's what he's saying.
You wanna work towards that.
Okay, so, what's the will of the committee here? I can, I can bring the recommendation forward if, if I get a mover and a seconder, but my preference would be to receive the report, receive the asset management plan, and leave out the word "accept."
And, uh, I, I, I understand the concern, but I, I think you have to accept that thi- this, this is where we are right now. The city? Because if we, be- because if we don't, if you're not accepting this a- as the asset management plan, then when funding applications become available, we have to use the old, ol- older, ed- edate plan that, that, that's, that's in place right now.
Powerful argument, so.
I move, we're checking, accept the recommendation.
Okay, Counselor Hunter, you're on. Do you have a seconder?
I'll second.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps. You gonna call the question on the recommendation? Those in favor? So I'm eager to get to work on modifying this. Modifying it.
We're, we're, we're eager to get to work on a long-range financial strategy. We've been modifying this for ten years, so.
Okay, and where am I now? I'm on, uh, seven D, establish a capital reserve fund. This is an easy one, I hope. Recommendation that committee recommends the council amend schedule A of credit card policy bylaw. Am I in the right place?
No.
No, I'm not. I gotta go to D.
Dedicated capital reserve.
You're one ahead.
Establish a capital reserve fund. So I got the wrong piece of paper.
It's for the ports. That's the ports, Mike.
Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, now I'm on, uh, I've got the right piece of paper. The committee recommends the council direct staff to draft the bylaw to establish a dedicated capital reserve fund. Discussion of any?
Interest-bearing, right?
Uh, a dedicated, interest-bearing, uh, capital reserve fund.
By definition, a fund is interesting.
Oh, by definition?
And in the financial considerations, the funds are held in a bank account earning interest.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, so looking for a mover and a seconder for the recommendation. I got Mr. Bradley moving. Mister, seconder, Counselor Cameron. And, uh, those in favor? Okay, so that's carried. And now I'm on the other one, which is? Credit card. And again, this one, committee recommends the council amend schedule A of the credit card policy bylaw, twenty nineteen forty-eight, to update position titles and add the clerk's position. Mover, please. Got Deputy Mayor Deschamps, seconder, please. Okay, uh, take Counselor Cameron. Discussion of any? None, those in favor? Okay, that's carried. And... And now I'm on, uh, just give me a minute, I have paperwork right here. Credit card policy, emergency management bylaw update. And, um, again, we have a recommendation that committee recommends the council adopt the emergency management program bylaw. So, discussion of any? Looking for a mover? Deputy Mayor Deschamps moving, seconder?
I'll second it.
Counselor Dilavah seconding. Discussion of any? Hearing none, those in favor? Motion is carried. And, uh, seven G, vacant and abandoned buildings bylaw. Adopt a vacant and abandoned building bylaw. Draft bylaw as attached to the briefing note and recommendation. The committee recommends to council the vacant, let vacant and abandoned building bylaw be adopted as attached. Now, let's start by discussion of the draft bylaw. Is there any questions here? Deputy Mayor, and then Counselor Hunter.
In my reading through, um, and this may be the wrong time, and if it is, just, just tell me, but in my reading through, I didn't, uh, see anywhere, uh, and I know this has been discussed before, about, uh, reductions to taxation based on occupancy. I didn't see that anywhere in the bylaw, and if I missed it, somebody can maybe point out to me that I did and where it's included in there. But I really think that there should be something in there, um, about, about that. If we're gonna put a vacancy in, uh, it's as strong as thirty days, that, that there be no reductions, uh, to taxation, um, based on vacancy. I think that's my point.
Okay, so I'm just gonna review that concept through the chair to the treasurer. Seems to me that that whole, uh, process that we used to go through of reducing taxation amounts, uh, for va- vacancy, did that program not go away?
Uh, yes, this is the final year of that program, twenty nineteen, and that's only for commercial and industrial buildings.
Right, it's the final year of it.
There is no vacancy rebate for, uh, multi-res or, or residential.
So it is gone as of?
It's gone, yeah.
As of the end of last year?
The final ones that we, uh, we received, two or three, uh, February of twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty, was for twenty nineteen vacancies. There are no twenty twenty vacancies.
We'll never be issuing vacancy rebates or anything.
We won't be issuing vacancy rebates after these three that are being promised.
That was my, my only concern.
Other discussion? Not hearing anything. Counselor Hunter, sorry.
I just don't see any, uh, particular definition in here about agricultural goes, barns. There's a lot of vacant barns that are used for storage and stuff. And we've got a lot of regulations and, and structural stuff involved in here that, uh, for a lot of barns, that people aren't gonna be dealing with. There needs to be a different section under here for agricultural buildings from inhabitable and industrial and commercial buildings, so.
Yes, so the question is, was this bylaw aimed at, um, dwellings for people? Or, and does the bylaw sidestep barns? Okay, so, well, I'm gonna ask the clerk first. She's drafted the bylaw.
So through the chair, um, the attention was, the first definition, building encompasses technically everything defined as a building under zoning bylaw. Um, my intent of this bylaw, I hadn't really factored in, actually, the agriculture shelters slash barns. Um, but I can go and review our zoning bylaw to confirm whether or not buildings also incorporates agricultural buildings. I think the intent of the bylaw would cover it. Uh, my original intent, um, for the schedules was incorporating any type of dwelling, commercial, industrial, institutional, et cetera. But I can further review it and bring it back to confirm whether or not it would fit within the agricultural issue as well.
Okay, so just a question then as regard to the definition, building. That definition, building, is it, is it taken from someplace else?
Through the chair, it is used, um, right into our zoning bylaw.
But the, the sentence structure is not right in that sentence.
The first portion is used from our zoning bylaw, sorry. The addition, um, as per township zoning bylaw, not included but limited to commercial dwelling, industrial structures, et cetera. That is something, um, that was discussed with the CBO and myself to clarify. But again, I can go back and we can revisit what we consider buildings.
See, I'm, I'm just reading the sentence. Buildings shall mean any structure used or intended to be used for support or sheltering any use or occupancy. Support or sheltering any use or occupancy. Anyway, that's one question, and you're gonna have a review of that, um, as it pertains to agriculture. Now, is it, is it as well that this bylaw? Well, I'm going to page thirty-six of fifty-eight, about the middle of the page. Yeah, you can't see it because it's overwritten, but.
The bottom?
Yeah, it's overwritten at the bottom. But halfway up, it says requirement for vacant and, vacant and abandoned buildings. And just above that heading is a, is a, is a paragraph that says vacant and abandoned shall mean any building or part of a building that is not being used or occupied. Now, is that by human beings or by human beings and animals?
By anything.
Okay. Not being used or, or occupied in any sense, eh? So, do, what do you think? Is it, is it our intent to try to get in here to applying this bylaw to, to, um, agricultural structures? Is that our intent?
Yeah, when we started out, when we were discussing vacant buildings and stuff, we're talking about residents being left vacant and not being put up, made use of for inhabitants.
Yeah. Getting off track.
Getting into a can of worms here, getting into agriculture, because every agricultural farmer, myself included, has buildings that are va- vacant, that you're not using all the time. But you're certainly not gonna, gonna tear them down, and you're certainly not gonna go in and, and spend twenty or thirty thousand dollars on them every year, year to keep them painted and keep them up to.
Nor would it be wise to get a permit for them to be vacant. Yeah. So I think from what you're saying and from our earlier discussions, I think it was our original intention that we're talking about dwellings for people.
Yeah.
Right? Now, is that, d- d- do we have consensus that that is the intent of what we're trying to do here? Because if, if that's the intent of what we're trying to do, I think that narrows it down for the staff quite a bit.
Um, Mr. Mayor, when I, when I brought this forward, the intent was to, uh, more on the residential, residential area. However, in reading through this, and I think staff has done a wonderful job on this, on this bylaw, I mean, if you have a, a, a farm building that is a possible fire hazard in some way, shape, or form, I think we need some mechanism to get that situation cleared up, because a fire spreads. It just isn't gonna stay in one building. And, I mean, I, I, I agree with, with, with Mr. Hunter that it's probably not a, uh, not a, um, as serious as intent that this was brought forward to, but the problem could still be there. And we also, also have to remember too, that most of this is going to be complaint driven.
No, 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 makes it very clear.
Well, that, but, but I, I, I.
Makes it very clear that we're not, it's not complaint driven.
Yeah, you, you, you are correct. You, you are correct there.
Every inspector shall be authorized to enforce the provisions of this bylaw.
Yes, that is, that, that is correct. Uh, however, um, I still, I still think that if you have a building that there's a possibility of a fire or any other, any other hazard, I think we have to have, uh, we have to have that, um, covered, included.
I'm sorry, but every building can be a fire hazard, no matter whether it's fixed up or not. Now, I totally disagree. I think we need to get agriculture out of this. We started on this for residential areas, and we're just opening up a can of worms, getting into going after every agricultural farm, farm in Edensburg Township, so.
Yeah, because I, I think that, I think we're getting, uh, we're, we're, first of all, we're actually more than doubling the, the number of structures that we would be trying to keep an eye on. And some of them are, some of them are not even visible from the road.
If I, if I may also, uh, just ask staff, I believe we have a exemption area here?
We do under section three.
Yes, we do, we have, we have exemptions. So would it be prudent then, my asking, that, uh, we could, we could fit the agriculture, uh, sector into the, into the exception, uh, column?
Exempt?
Yes, exemptions.
Well, those exemptions are, see, they, they refer, they, they refer again more to residential properties.
What you have written there now, yes. But you could put one in, you could put a, you could put an exemption in. I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out for staff for consideration.
Getting in here, Counselor?
No, I'm good. I, I agree with John, though. I think we've got to, uh, take away from the, uh, from the agriculture side and make sure it's not bringing in the agriculture side, especially with, I agree with the vacant barns. There's all kinds of vacant barns in there. We, we can't please, uh, my.
There are all kinds of them around the country that are vacant. They usually, they're grazing, grazing a few chickens or something during the summer, and they're vacant all winter.
That's right.
No, we're not, what we're talking about, though, is vacant, residential.
Yeah.
That's, that's basically the, the, the premise that this.
Make it residential and leave it at that.
Okay.
But it did have the industrial.
We should have some.
Oh, it's, well, wait, now, is there, does this, uh, does this address itself to industrial and commercial vacant?
Correct. We did address that, because we did include mechanisms for fire suppression. So we technically can address issues that are institutional, commercial, and industrial in nature.
Okay, so industrial, commercial, residential?
Institutional.
Institutional. As per the tax, um, as per the tax classes.
That's what I, we narrowed it down to, yes.
Okay, as per the tax classes, so if it's one of those tax classes, it falls under this bylaw. If it's a, if it's a, any other tax class, well, multi-residential could be vacant too. Multi-residential is four or more.
That's considered dwellings, sir.
Yeah, that's dwelling. Okay, I think we're, I mean, reading the discussion here, I think we're pretty much focused on residential, industrial, and commercial.
Shall we, shall we say built-up area or urban area?
No, no, because I think there's an awful lot of these buildings in the rural area. I mean, I came by one less than a day, less than a week ago. Completely abandoned.
So we'll buy one this afternoon.
Yeah.
If I may?
Yep.
Uh, I'm just thinking outside of our, our township for a second, and, and I'm thinking, you know, California Avenue of Brockville, and how many years, um, you know, a building like Shorewood Packaging sat empty? Um, still had insurance paid, still had its taxes paid, kept everything up. Wasn't, didn't have any use, it would be considered vacant. Uh, they were searching for, uh, a resident, um, but it, it definitely sat, you know, uh, empty for, for many days.
But maybe they had a permit to be empty.
So, so you're suggesting that thirty days, from an industrial standpoint or from a commercial standpoint, that, that we should be getting a permit for thirty days of vacancy?
Yeah, that's what it's saying.
That's what it says.
If you're vacant for thirty days, you get a permit.
That's a pretty short time frame for a residential.
Pretty aggressive for a commercial and industrial.
Through the chair, that's just a number staff picked.
Yeah.
Um, based on review of other policies we found. That's a complete number that council can determine. That's up to you guys.
Okay, can we say, can we make a distinction, thirty for residential and ninety for industrial, commercial?
We can build that in, yes.
But I'm thinking of something like the van, the, the old grocery store in Cardinal. It's been vacant for well on two years. Well on three, actually.
Benson Public School.
Benson Public School, another good one. Okay, so how do we tighten this up a little bit? Or do we want it tightened up? Or do we want it clarified? I mean, I think this, I think the staff has done a great job here. What I would like to do is I'd like to give it first and second reading so that everybody is aware of the fact that we're moving in this direction, and then see if we can, and, and give the staff a little bit more time to address some of the issues that we're talking about here and clarify them in the text.
I won't give it, more for giving it first and second reading and tell you something's put in there, taken agriculture there, but.
Okay, so all you want is a statement at the beginning that, is that, uh, in one of the wherethes?
And then covered under agricultural.
Well, we don't want anything, because we, there could be a farmhouse.
Yeah, the farmhouse class residential, they're separated from the farm.
Okay.
They have a separate tax on my house from my barn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Separated.
Yeah, okay. So, so in the rationale clause, you want a, you want a, a clause in here that makes it very clear that we're not targeting.
Agricultural buildings.
Agricultural outbuildings.
Yeah.
Okay? So I think that's easy enough to do. And then it's easy to make the distinction between thirty days vacant residential. I mean, I don't even have a problem making it sixty days residential vacant residential, because I know the ones that I'm thinking about have been vacant for a year. Eh?
Some of them four or five.
Some of them four or five.
You're not gonna have somebody renting an apartment. It's conceivable that it could be empty while somebody tries to, to rent an apartment for longer than thirty days. Still considered vacant, it's not being used for anything.
Yeah. So what's your point?
Thirty days wouldn't, I mean, thirty days seems pretty aggressive if, if you're a landlord and, and you're, you're not able to find a tenant.
In thirty days?
In thirty days.
Oh, I see, so give the, give the landlord, his tenant moved out, give him more than thirty days to get a new tenant in. Okay, so.
You get people, a tenant's moved out, and then, then you have three months' work to do getting it ready before you can.
Yeah, but, but again, that's.
It's not vacant because you're doing work.
Yeah, that's not vacant, because that's addressed in here.
Yeah, yeah.
But ninety days vacant, clear vacancy is, is reasonable. We think, do we have a consensus, nodding of the heads on ninety days of vacancy?
I, I can, I can live with ninety days. I just wanted to point out that I must have, I must have read twenty or thirty bylaws from various areas, and, uh, and, uh, the thirty, the thirty days was the majority of, of the writings. However, there were others, absolutely. And, and I can certainly live, I'd be very happy with ninety days.
When, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
When, when you're in. When, when you read through the bylaws and, and, and it was good, good homework, um, did you look at enforcement statistics and things like that as well?
Yes.
For the bylaw?
Yes.
And, and was there much enforcement of a thirty day bylaw on vacancies?
Yes, actually there was, yes.
Really? So with, with issue?
But I, but I will, but I, but I will say that that was more in the larger urban areas.
It's hard to imagine to me that, that somebody who lives on your street moves out and, and the home sits vacant for, for thirty days, but the bylaw enforcers peeking in the windows uh, within thirty days to say that, oh, this one's empty.
Yeah, it's, it, it, it's, it's bad, it was a bad choice. No question, that was a bad choice because that house in two days should have been.
I think if we limit it to, to two short of a period, it's just going to become a case that is unenforceable.
Yeah, that's my concern. Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're, we're arriving at a consensus that ninety days is reasonable. If you've been empty for more, if you've been empty vacant for more than ninety days, you need a permit.
Or no work has been done.
Or, or you're working on it. Yeah. But you take the house on William Street, there's no work being done. It's been emptied for a lot more than thirty days, ninety days. That, there should be a permit there and a building should be secured and, and he should be paying, he should be paying, you know, I mean, what is the rate? It's five hundred bucks, isn't it, for the permit?
No.
No, hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty for the permit. But at least we can notify him that you need a permit. That gets him moving off his other end. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I agree with the ninety days for residential, but you have to go a little higher on, on the commercial at one point.
Yeah.
Commercial.
Ninety for residential, industrial, commercial, one point. All right, well, we got a meeting of the heads on that one, nodding of the heads on that one? Okay, so ninety and a hundred and twenty then. All right. Okay, now, so does, does, uh, does everybody agree to first and second reading? Getting this out in the general public so the general public knows when we're going here. I don't want to discount this on the, on the, on the public without notice. And I, the, the problem is what we do is we put it on our website, but nobody sees it there. How do we advertise the fact that, well, we're thinking of instituting these permits?
A bylaw officer with a warning.
Uh, go ahead, you have a suggestion?
Sorry, through the chair, um, I can't demand that my, uh, bylaw officer send out warnings to a bylaw that hasn't been in place yet or passed or even really agreed to.
Yeah. Can we put a, can we put out a press release of some sort?
Uh, through the chair, we can advertise it on our website and through social media. We've had different feedback, for example, of our establishment of our fire department policy that we passed a month and a half ago.
Right. Did we hear from, did we hear about it?
Um, we received a little bit of feedback. I, I don't monitor it on a daily day basis, but we do receive some, yes. And it's out there.
It doesn't matter how we advertise or how we put it, where somebody gets, comes along and we ask them for a per, permit, they're going to say they never heard a word about it.
Oh, yes, I know.
Absolutely.
But, but at least we've got something to refer to. Yes, we advertised. Here's, here's the ad that was in, in all the paper. Okay, uh, so, go ahead.
Uh, we did change that for the, uh, for the agriculture building?
Yes, yeah. It'll come in, it'll come in the form of a, of a, of an exemption under the rationale clause.
Thank you.
All right, so now, uh, I think what we're getting to is the recommendation that recommends the council, the vacant and abandoned building bylaw be presented, be presented for first and second reading. Does everybody agree to the recommendation saying be presented for first and second reading?
I would agree with that.
They're going to bring it back, really?
Yeah, and it'll come back.
I'm going to vote for first and second reading.
And full, full discussion before a third, before a third.
Okay, yeah.
It's all discussion.
Okay, I need a mover.
Can it come back to the committee?
Yes, it'll come back to the committee again.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I need a mover.
I'll move.
Okay, so I have counselor Cameron moving. Seconder?
I'll second.
Counselor Dilavas seconding. Those in favor? Okay. All right, now just give me a minute to.
Yeah, we're going to start off here. Six. Yep. Good. Wait, wait. I'm good. Four. Plus paper, rest of the hour.
There you go, you're in there, bro.
Yeah, well.
I'm just, I'm not suggesting anything.
I'm not. Seven H, employee code of conduct policy update. So this is on page forty-five of fifty-eight. And there is a recommendation, the committee recommends that council repeal bylaws two thousand and seven twenty-nine, two thousand and nine seventy-six, two thousand and sixteen sixty-one and replace them with the updated employee code of conduct policy attached. So, questions with policy as attached? Any questions there? Hearing none, move on. Nothing?
What are the basic changes from the original one? Are there any major change?
Uh, through the chair, I basically took the original two thousand and seven bylaw, incorporated what the basic understandings and, um, outlines of the highlighted areas and then let's just say beefed it up to what it needs to be to encompass our new township policies and procedures, referencing those new township policies and procedures and addressing different, um, aspects such as our, uh, workplace violence harassment, fit for duty for substance abuse and, uh, expanded on a couple of the headlines, just to make it more relevant.
I couldn't really see too much change in it. I might have missed it along the way.
Other questions? Further discussion? Hearing none, looking for a mover. Counselor Hunter moving. Does he have a seconder?
Yes.
Counselor Dilavas seconding. Further discussion has ended. Hearing none, about to call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now again, are you going to just bring the policy forward as it is or are you going to give it a little bit more time? Uh, are you going to bring it forward for all three readings or just first and second, which you want to do? Has it been, has it been circulated to staff?
It has been reviewed by senior management.
What about staff? What about, what about the union people?
So, I, I, as of right now, it has not been, so I, I would suggest that, that first and second reading be, be provided at this meeting and it circulated.
Well, I just don't want a lot of blowback because, uh, you know, it wasn't discussed with the union and the union wasn't aware of it and, you know, there's nothing here that, that, that shouldn't upset anybody, but lack of communication does upset people. So, let's give, make sure that we cover that base. Okay, um, I think that finishes seven H. So now I'm on item eight, which is council inquiries and notices of motion. Are there any? So I have one notice of motion that I've already talked about and it'll come forward at the, um, at the meeting at the end of the month, which will be the motion to accept the job site challenge. And, uh, that motion's being drafted and we'll circulate it ahead of time. And I'll talk about it a little bit more in the mayor's report, but it is a notice of motion. Has anybody else got any questions or inquiries or notices of motion? About to move on. All right, item number nine is the mayor's report extensive this, tonight. So, uh, first of all, with regard to the job site challenge, we saw the first draft review last Friday on March the sixth, and I can tell you, I'm pretty impressed with the work that Novatech has done. This is going to be a very, very professional presentation. Uh, we'll see the second draft, which will probably be, except for minor edits and things like that, the second draft we'll see on Monday, March the sixteenth. Now I'm hoping that after we've seen that draft, that we can circulate it to council members and the committee members, uh, by, by the seventeenth or the eighteenth. So you get a chance to look at it in its draft form. That will give them, if you get it on the seventeenth or the eighteenth, that'll give them the, the nineteenth or the twentieth to respond to anything you see that you would like to question and that, that contact will be through me. And then I will get back to Dave and Dave will talk to the, the author, which is Steve Pence. So that's the process that we'll use. The idea is to get it into the draft council package on Friday, March the twentieth. That has to be finalized by about noon. And that puts it in the public arena, uh, over that weekend of March the twentieth. So it comes forward to council, uh, for final approval on March the twenty-third and that's where the motion will come to give it approval and approve it for submission. And all council members and the C A O. The cover page is designed in such a way that all council members sign and the C A O signs when it's submitted. And that accompanies the resolution that, that will pass that night. Going to be asking for, um, what is the term we use when we record the votes? Recorded vote. That's the term we use when we're looking for recorded votes.
Do one of his friends.
So, that, that explains that process and, uh, quite excited about it at this point. Now, is there any kind of feedback from the, uh, session this weekend at the Leo Boyman Center? What kind of reaction did we get at the booth? I had three. Wanted to know what this job site was all about and when are we going to get new jobs there? Honest to God. But I said to them, I said, the light's on, it's in the tunnel. And I said, it's going to take some, some time. And I said, it's not. They all thought it was automobile. I said, no, it's manufactured. You know, I think they got sideswiped because of the first. It's out there first, you see. And these are young families, mind you. Like young, young, I'm going to say thirty, thirty-five, maybe up. We, I don't know, nobody was here. Wendy, one was probably twenty-five from Brockville. Very, very. Anybody looking for public meetings?
No.
No?
Now, I was going to go do some walking on Cedar Grove, actually.
Good, that'd be great.
When it's nice out with some pamphlets.
Yeah, pamphlets there.
Yeah.
And if you wouldn't mind starting at one end and let me know where you leave off because I'd like to do a few.
Okay.
Yeah? Now, you were at the booth?
Yeah, other than somebody telling me or asking me when the Volkswagen electric vehicle assembly plant was, uh, was going to be relocated. Other than that, uh, nothing but positive. So just, uh, people looking forward to the, the great possibility of jobs.
I was not the fair, but I was a, my establishment and I had twenty-five or thirty people because they know I am a counselor. Giving them thumbs up and saying, come on, go for it. We need jobs in this area. Glad you guys are on the right track, so.
Seriously?
Lots of support.
Good support.
Lots of support.
I know and I've been told by the M P P that he's getting calls for people that he's never heard from before. This is great. Hope, hope it's going to go ahead. Hope your site's going to be sele, hope our site's going to be selected. So that's good. The reason I'm bringing it up is because I did have one individual say to me, Pat, you should be holding a public meet, meeting. People have questions. They want to ask questions.
Pre- 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 sure.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, except we can talk about process. That's about all we can talk about at this point in time. We're submitting an application. The, it's clear now the province is going to pick three and, uh.
I'd rather wait until if we're accepted.
Wait till afterwards.
And then go full, full bore.
Otherwise you get, uh, deflation.
It'll start here and the next thing you know, we'll be bringing in nuclear plants.
So, no. Okay, so, now I'm going to introduce another idea at this point because I don't want to spring it on anybody. Uh, our engagement with Novatech was to get us to the point of submission. Okay? So in, in the submission document, they identify a number of the things that are going to have to be done to get electricity to the site, to get sewer to the site, to get water to the site, to get natural gas to the site. And they also identify a number of provincial studies that are going to have to be done. So, uh, once we've ended that engagement with Novatech and that job is over and before we know the result of whether we're selected or not, and that's strictly red on the water, I admit that, I would, I'm going to come to council and I'm going to ask council for authorization to spend some money identifying all of the various steps and the timelines and the cost to meet every one of those steps. And the reason I need that report is because I have to convince our M P P that the, if we're selected, if we're selected, it's going to take both time and money to get the site ready. It's the provincial government land. We are going to be offering to do the work on their land, provided that we have a, an authorized agreement with them to enter upon their land, do this work, arrange it, uh, contract it, supervise it, get the reports ready, pay the consultants and then bill the province back for the work. So I need to have a document that tells me how much money I'm looking at to get that work done. So I'll be asking you, after we get this submitted, for authorization to proceed to the next step, even though at that point we don't know whether we're, uh, selected or not. So I just put that up there for now. I'm going on with my report. You can ask me questions if you have questions. Uh, so tomorrow, South Nation Conservation is holding a First Nations Working Group meeting with representatives from the Mohawks of Akwasazni and the Algonquins from, uh, North Bay and Pembroke area. So we're going to that meeting, it's, uh, starts at Finch at ten o'clock. Counselor, you going to come?
I think so, yes.
Are you going to meet me there, I guess? And then following that meeting, which will be ten to twelve sort of thing, the riverfront mayors are meeting in Brockville at one o'clock. I'm going to try to get there. I'll be late getting there. But I've told, uh, Karina Smith Gat, Gackey that the First Nation Working Group meeting in South Nation comes first. Got to go build some relationships.
Purpose of that meeting, Mr.?
In South Nation? It's, I think it's just relationships. Meeting people and saying hello and.
They haven't done this here before?
They have not, no, no, yeah. So I'm going to take copies of our brochure. As you all know, we've sent, uh, now we've sent two letters to each of our six contacts, I think, Rebecca? Six, five or six contacts?
Five.
Five contacts. So I'm going to be looking for more contacts to send more letters and provide more information. All right, on, on Wednesday, the Independent Electricity Service Operator will be holding the first ever Eastern Region Electricity Forum in Belville. That's from twelve to four thirty. I'm going to go to that and I'm going to take our draft report from our industrial part with me and just to see how, what role the independent electricity service operator sees for themselves with regard to new development. Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus will meet in Napanee on Thursday and Friday. It'll be gone most two days. And then the last thing is, well, two last things. The Enbridge letter. I talked to you about the Enbridge re, letter for natural gas. So Rebecca, we circulated that to everybody? That's the letter that's addressed to Luke. I think everybody saw it. And basically all we're doing is renominating our County Road Two Spencaville Natural Gas Extension Project. We're trying, the, the process has changed us a little bit. Um, Luke, as our regional manager, has said, I want everybody that's still interested to respond to me and then I'm going to submit all these projects to the Ontario Energy Board. The Ontario Energy Board is going to review all of the nominations to, to see which one of the projects nominated has got the greatest local contribution, financial contribution. And then they're going to pick those projects and recommend them to the minister. So it's going to be probably a four month process from the time our letter hits Luke's desk until the process unfolds where. until the process unfolds with the End Energy Board recommending to the minister. So that's underway, we'll follow it through. And, last thing. The Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation has presented me on Friday with an agreement. And I'll just tell you about the agreement. So this agreement they want us to sign, it's an acknowledgement of confidential information, and it's a non-disclosure agreement. So all they're saying is, we want you to sign this confidential information, non-disclosure agreement, and agree that anything we send you about the lands in the industrial, the Edwardsburg Land Bank will be kept confidential. In other words, I think they intend us, intend to send us some of their appraisals, they don't want those appraisals made public. So Dave and I'll be signing it, sending it back to them, and then following it through to see what their process is gonna be from there. There's already been high-level cabinet meetings with Infrastructure Ontario, so that the minister that's in charge of Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation is aware of the fact that the job site challenge that we're submitting encompasses two thousand acres. And so they have agreement at the cabinet level that that two thousand acres is protected until we see what happens with the selection process. So that, those bases have all been covered. So that's why I reported, if there's any questions, I'll answer them, otherwise, we're moving on. No questions? All right, I've had.
No questions. Um, can I just make one, one quick comment that probably should have done under, under number, number eight? But on Saturday morning, I attended the Fire Department Breakfast here in, in Spencerville, and I just wanted to compliment Chief Moore and, and the Fire Department on what appeared to be an extremely successful breakfast. It was rumored while I was there that there were over three hundred and seventy people that were served. Um, anyone that I talked to really enjoyed it being set up on the fire hall floor versus, versus the inside hall with the trucks as the, as the backdrop, and they had nothing but compliments from the guests, so, job very well done.
Just, just to follow up on that, it was on, I believe, C J O H S as well.
I just didn't like the syrup.
That's a low blow.
Actually, it was excellent.
Very good. Squirrel, squirrel juice.
Very, very good.
I, I had double dose.
I did too, I took place.
So, so to the chief, I was there as well, I know councillor Dillawatt was. What was the final number, if you don't mind just asking?
Uh, through the chair, I, I don't have the, the official number, I definitely was over three hundred, but I, I don't have the official.
But anyway, job, job well done for this. So thanks for bringing that up, I appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have a few, I'm gonna pull a Jerry Moore out here. You know, Jerry used to use a lot in this local paper, say, at, at meetings here. Uh, they were self-dundas, by the way, because he had an orientation that way, but this is Brockville. This paper, I don't know, my better half gets this every week with all her flyers and stuff. But this week, and it has good little tidbits in it. This week's, just for a second here, Brockville's approved their budget with a levy hike of point six-two percent. I thought it was interesting, they used zero-based budgeting for the first time. But they also peeled out a request from E O R N, where they denied them the funding they were looking for, which is, is kinda bothersome, but anyway, that's what they did. We also have Augusta's budget approved, one point nine percent. And you can read it, I mean, if, if you get this thing. But they, they deferred, they needed another fire hall up in the north end. And they kinda deferred discussion on that. They, I guess they overspent on the one in Maitland a little bit, and they felt that.
Just a couple of million.
Yeah, they felt that they better not broach that issue again, right, right away. But I think it's, it's the kind of thing that, it's one of the services that municipalities provide that I think you, you, you delay and defer at your peril, you know? So, just, you know, in reference to the fact that we're gonna spend a little bit in twenty twenty on our drawings or future plans. And then, of course, the other thing that's kind of interesting is Brockville has a taxpayer group which, which looks at the budgeting process. You know, we went through our budget here for, I don't know, five meetings.
Yeah.
I don't know if there was a, a member of the public here at all, you know, like, through that whole process. But in Brockville, they have quite an active committee who, who tries to, you know, hold council and staff. It's kind of an interesting approach, not new, by the way. I was on a committee like that many, many years ago in, in Markham area. But, again, they've got a whole shemitney of questions about how did you get to the budget? Why is this line not being explained more and so on? So it may be, just as a point of interest, the paper is entitled, what was it? Brockville and Prescott this week.
Yeah, nobody seems to know where it comes from.
Well, it's the old E M C, I think it's the old E M C.
Yeah.
And it's free, and it has all the sale papers, and I guess that's what it is. But there's always some good little article in there.
Okay, did he further?
There's no article that we've approved our budget.
No.
They're really only.
Okay, um, we have no closed session? Chair's looking for the motion to adjourn. Okay, Deputy Mayor Deschamp and Councillor Dillawatt, those in favor?
Aye, aye.
The motion is carried.